This time I'd like to call the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, open meeting of Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, into open session. The first agenda item we have is election officers. And as our practice, the most senior member calls the meeting into session and will only have this for 15 seconds until we get a chairperson of our committee, and then the grab will go to that. And that person who was elected as chairperson will then do the other nominations for vice chair and for secretary. So at this time, do I have any nominations? And it goes to Southborough will be the town lead will be having a regional chairperson. Paul.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Key as chairman.
Second.
Paul, Paul. And are there any other nominations? I see the nominations closed. All those in favor of Kathy Key as chairperson of the regional. And it's unanimous. Congratulations. You're chair. So then the next order of business is election of the vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kathleen Harrigan-Polichko as vice chair.
Second.
Okay, moved by Paul, seconded by Paul. Any discussions? Anyone else? All in favor? Yeah, congratulations. And the next one is for the secretary. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Paul Desmond.
I'd second that. Moving things along.
Paul, Paul. Congratulations, Paul. So our next order of business is the public hearing of school choice.
Yes, thank you. Newly elected chairperson of the regional school committee. We always begin the meeting in May with the public hearing on school choice. The chairperson, as is customary practice, will welcome any discussion on this topic, and then we'll close the public hearing. As so noted in the agenda, a vote will be taken during the regular meetings to vote for or not to vote for adopting school choice in the FY '20 school year. In 1991, the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, was written to require that each year, school committees consider whether their district should be a member of the school choice program for the upcoming school year. The school choice program allows a parent or a guardian to enroll a child in a school district other than the district in which the child lives, should that just district be, any district. We have the opportunity of identifying whether we want to be a receiving district through our vote this evening. Transportation is not a part of the school choice program, and transportation remains the sole responsibility of the parent who may elect to have their child attend school in a district that they do not reside. A vote by the regional school committee this evening is taken customarily no later than June 1st, and the decision will be recorded with the Department of Education in accordance with their guidelines. If we do not take a vote by June 1st, the district automatically becomes a school choice district. Historically, the Northborough-Southborough Regional District has not been a participant in school choice, and we believe history means all the way back to 1991. Joan, you're back to 1994, so at least from that. And it is again my recommendation to the committee this evening not to participate or choose to participate in the program in the FY '20 school year. I would however recommend that based on the enrollment projections that we have and have shared on numerous occasions, that the regional school committee consider revisiting this topic in the form of a subcommittee next year. It's been some time since we've reviewed thoroughly the projections, the enrollment projections in relationship to school choice. And as far as my recommendation for this evening and for FY '20, I would again recommend not to participate in this program. It's based on fluctuation of enrollments from year to year and throughout the year, the impact on these enrollments and these fluctuations on course selection process. Students who are enrolled in any grade level are entitled to remain in the district until graduation for four years. Neither K-8, Southborough or Northborough have elected to participate in the school choice program again this year or next year. The $5,000 incremental Chapter 70 reimbursement per child is far below our actual per pupil expenditure of $17,040. That is our newly released FY '18 per pupil number. Neighboring districts have chosen once again not to participate in school choice, or at least those districts that we have identified. And as we know, the process of enrolling students in the school choice program is to identify any grades that may be considered open for school choice enrollment. We then enroll those students on a lottery basis, so we have actually no opportunity to have conversations with the students or really to review any of the student profiles that may be drawn or selected through any means that we choose to create, to select students for school choice. Any questions?
Special ed. How does that, we don't have a conversation, but, so does that just mean that if any, we accept any school choice child and just open checkbook in terms of what they need for special ed?
Right. We have no, no election or no selection process involved in school choice. If we open for grade three, we automatically take anyone who may be interested in participating in this program through Algonquin Regional, and then it's either on a lottery or first come in, first placed basis.
Okay.
So every year we have, we've had this conversation, you know, and there's always been the discussion of gee, it's a way to pull money in, not from the taxpayers of Northborough and Southborough. And over the last several years, one of the, one of the, one of the reasons behind why we've turned it down and really kind of almost tabled the conversation has been an alternate program that we were chasing with some success, as I recall, where we were bringing almost foreign exchange students in, I guess would be as good a description as any, for in fact a payment much greater than the 5K a year that you get from school choice. Are we still a member in that? Are we, and what's the, what's the student count these days or the projected student count for next year?
So it varies.
Yeah?
You know, oftentimes, we're not aware of the actual numbers until the end of the school year or at some point through the school year. We actually have expanded our participation when it was first presented, I think, three years ago, maybe four. We were using Cambridge Institute. Since then, we've expanded our reach or our range to include countries in South America and also Scandinavian countries. And so Algonquin is one of those schools that is highly considered by students who are coming to the United States for a year of study. And at this point, we did enroll one student this year, and that student elected to return to their home country placement. But we, it is a very active program, and we have been very successful in attracting students. Each month on our revolving account information, we carry that balance because it is in a tuition revolving account that some of the money resides, and we're pretty close to 90,000. We are allowed to charge our full per pupil expenditure costs. So most recently, we have updated our per pupil expenditure with SEVIS, which is operated through Homeland Security. It allows us to issue the appropriate visa for study here or an authorized school. And we've updated not only the per pupil, but we're also allowed to factor in that cost, any reasonable expenditures that the student may incur while they are here, so as to provide for that student maximum opportunity to participate in athletics and other extracurricular activities. So we do assess the fee for athletics, a reasonable fee based on an assumption of a two-sport athlete, and also the appropriate fees that would otherwise be charged to our own students. And we're hopeful, I actually spoke with Lisa Conroy, who oversees the program there at the high school, and she's optimistic about enrollment for next year. So it's been a very successful program.
So maybe one of them offsets is a better offset than maybe three or four school choice kids, right?
It's four school choice students.
Seems like.
Typically, they're seniors.
Yeah.
We allow juniors and seniors in the program. We did have an option to have a sophomore student for a half-year program this year, and elected not to have that student participate because we felt that it wouldn't be a most, the most positive experience for the student, but also a little bit of a disruption based on when that student was going to arrive. One of the things that this program allows for is interviewing the students in advance, not only through the agency, but of placement, but directly with the student. So there's a dialogue that takes place. And we also have an opportunity to have a measured enrollment process in terms of where that student might need to be placed within the academic course structure here, whether they're college prep, whether they're, you know, an honor student. So we're making sure that wherever that student is placed, we're not necessarily displacing the student that's enrolled at Algonquin, Northborough and Southborough. It's been very successful. I think it's met with success. It's a great way to bring culture into our school and for our students to really engage in building relationships as well.
Perfect.
Yes, we can close this hearing.
We can say we're closed.
The hearing is closed. Okay, the hearing is closed. I promise somebody that next time. You only have to listen once a year. Our next order is action on minutes. Do we have a motion?
So I move that we accept the minutes from the open meeting of Wednesday, April 24th, as provided.
Second.
Race to the second.
Joan, Joan got it.
I thought you got it.
Motion by Paul and seconded by Joan. Is there any discussions or corrections to him? Okay, all those in favor? Next, our next business is new business. So now we have the eleven school choice. Okay?
I move that the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee vote to not participate in school choice in the FY '20-20 school year and to direct the superintendent to inform the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education no later than June 1st, 2019 of this vote.
Second.
First by Paul, seconded by Dan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Not school choice? That passes. Next is the Social Studies Department presentation. We have Brittany Burns, the department chair.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to share with you some of the amazing work that has been going on in the Social Studies Department. This has been a busy year, to say the least, for us. We've had changes coming from the state, we've had changes that we've made internally, but I'm very excited about the work that we've been doing, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to share that with you. So this is most of our department together. Our department consists of 15 educators, all of whom are professional status teachers and have been here for at least five years. I think that's a testament to the work that we're doing and the passion that our teachers feel. I do want to take one minute to give a little shout out to Christina Smith, who I think many of you have met before. She is officially Dr. Smith as of this week. She's worked very hard to earn her doctorate from the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and she received an award for the best dissertation at the College of Education there. So I did want to take an opportunity to give her a little credit because that was a long process, and she worked very hard for that. If I had to kind of label some themes for this year, the work that we've been doing, I didn't intentionally go for alliteration here, but I'll roll with it. I would say that our year is focused on curriculum, civics, and collaboration. We've had the unique opportunity this year of being presented with new curriculum from the state. So as you're probably familiar, in June of 2018, Massachusetts passed a new K-12 frameworks for social studies, which included some pretty significant changes to the middle and high school requirements. It refocused some of the content to a more skills-based approach to teaching social studies, introduced some new ideas, changed the eighth grade curriculum from a World History I to a civics-based course, and really kind of pushed us to do some realignment at the high school as well. Then we also had in September of 2018, the state legislature passed the Act to Promote and Enhance Civic Engagement, which is more commonly known as the Civic Education Bill. And this is a bill that in addition to a lot of things requires students in the state of Massachusetts to have the opportunity to participate in civics projects in both eighth grade and at the high school level. So these two changes really have been kind of the focus of our work as we also have been piloting new programs as well. This also led to a really unique opportunity this year for district-wide collaboration. And for me, this is one of the things that I am most excited about and most proud of that we have done. So the K-12 Curriculum Committee has met frequently throughout the year, really building a vision of what K-12 social studies curriculum should look like in Northborough, Southborough, and at the regional high school. Very often, it's easy for us to kind of be three components, and we're really working to see this as a vertical program from the time kids enter kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, right? What kind of citizens are we trying to develop? What are the skills that kids need to engage in these fields? And what does that curriculum and content look like? So we work together to really unpack some of the new legislation, the new frameworks to develop a mission statement for social studies in the district. And then that work kind of carried over into the secondary level, thanks to a really generous grant from Northborough Education Foundation. The teachers, the social studies teachers in grades six through 12 from Melikan, Trattier, and Algonquin were able to come together for our professional development days this year. We had a one-day workshop hosted by Facing History in Ourselves called Fostering Civil Discourse in the Social Studies Classroom. It was a really great workshop that looked at skills and instructional approaches to help kids engage in civil dialogue, to communicate and discuss current events, political issues, controversial things that are going on, the things that show up in our classrooms every single day, right, as we teach history and the modern world. And so that was the first day in March, our March 11th Professional Development Day. And then on the 29th, we got the opportunity to work together to unpack the skills and new frameworks and talk about kind of our vertical and horizontal social studies curriculum. So between the two middle schools and up from sixth through that last 11th grade course. And it was a really great opportunity. It was the first time that I've been, since I've been here, that we've really had that concerted effort with all three schools to look at social studies, to work together, to talk about how we see our kids growing and progressing and how we can build off each other. We've put in for some summer PD to continue that work between the middle school and high school teams, but that was a really exciting and unique opportunity that I wanted to share and definitely to thank Northborough Education Foundation for their support there. So as I said, part of the work that the K-12 Committee did and then the six through 12 group was to kind of create this vision statement of what do we want or what do we see social studies education as being in our district? What are our values? What's important to us? And what can we then make our focus, right, as we move forward, realigning curriculum, making the changes that we need to make? So after many meetings and lots of discussion and unpacking of skills and discussion, we've kind of crafted this kind of living vision statement. So I'll go through it, and I've kind of highlighted the things that we've identified as being our top priorities moving forward. So our belief is that history and social science instruction in the public schools of Northborough and Southborough prepare students for informed participation in our democratic society and an increasingly globalized world. High-quality history and social science instruction engages students in collaborative, inquiry-driven learning that emphasizes civic engagement, primary source analysis, traditional and digital literacy skills, and includes a wide range of perspectives to equip students to become responsible 21st century citizens. So this is kind of our mission as we, like I said, bring in the new curriculum, realign, talk about what resources we want, how we're going to be incorporating technology. All of those things kind of stem from these core values that we've been unpacking as a team. For me, that's really exciting work because it's something that really can connect us all the way down to kindergarten. In terms of what's going on in the department, this has been a really exciting year, and I could stay all night and talk about it, but I'll try to keep it, keep it focused. I highlighted here our three required courses. So we require history in the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. And each team has kind of taken on their own big projects this year, working together in different ways to meet the needs of kids, to pilot some new and innovative programs. And there's been some really incredible work done. So I think the first and biggest one, the last time that I was here two years ago, we were talking about piloting this program, and we're finally actually doing it in the ninth grade. So this is our unlevelled history program. We have six teachers plus Ms. Honey, our librarian, who have been working together for two years, three years really, to develop this course that brings all of our freshmen together. So we kind of did away with the CP and honors labels, brought all of the kids together in a course that really focuses on skills, both academic and social, as well as kind of unpacking that history of, you know, the first half of U.S. History I. What's really exciting about this is that group developed a model that is now serving as models for other schools. So we've had visitors from Brookline High School and other schools who are, who are using our model to launch their own unlevelled freshman courses in their schools with this idea of big group. So the way that we've scheduled this, every, for six periods, there are three classes of freshmen that meet. So half the team teaches every period. And during each unit, they bring together all three of those classes in the library to do innovative activities and lessons that really kind of focus on skills for kids, but also building those connections, right? So you have 60 to 70 freshmen together in the library. Some of you maybe have popped in during those times, and it's nice and loud and exciting, and they're doing all kinds of amazing work. But looking at primary sources, sometimes engaging in interactive activities or simulations, having debates and discussions, but really an opportunity for kids to work together with other students and teachers. And this is something that's really unique. No one else is really doing a model like this, and it's been really successful, and I'm so proud of the work that they've done this year. In addition to that, the team has also launched a podcast. So right behind the screen, you can't see it, but we have a new little podcast studio. And if you are interested, you can follow them. It is fourscore and seven podcasters. But they are creating a podcast that features, you know, additional histories that they didn't get a chance to really get into in class. They've done podcasts helping kids prepare for exams. They've done podcasts on, you know, digging deeper into topics like George Washington or the history of Thanksgiving. It's a really fun way for students to connect and not just freshmen listen, so that's exciting. It's also branched off into some opportunities for students to do podcasting. So Mr. Kellit, one of the teachers on that team, and Mr. Berry, who teaches U.S. History II, are working on a new Algonquin political podcast where students can actually write in about topics that they're interested and come and have a political discussion on this podcast with their peers and with other teachers. So really looking at, I think, exciting and unique ways to use some of the new technology. And the podcasting was also made possible by a grant from Southborough Education Foundation. So we really are appreciative of those organizations who support our work. In the 10th grade this year, we have continued with our integration of the open source textbooks. So two years ago, another teacher and I were struggling to find resources that, that met our needs, and so we worked with some open source textbooks that were available online and resources and created our own book. Now we're kind of in the phase of developing more interactive materials based on that using museum websites and videos and things like that, incorporating them, and also developing support materials so that we can offer this at a variety of levels for kids with things like graphic organizers and note-taking skills built in. So this has been really successful for us, but it's kind of one of those projects that I think is never really over, you know? We hope that it'll just keep getting better and better. We also this year really put a lot of effort and focus on our Modern America unit. So last year, we decided to take current history from 2000 to the present and move it to the very front of our U.S. History class. So the first thing when kids come in in 10th grade that they learn about is foreign policy, political issues, economic issues, and social issues that are going on right now. So we start with current events and then connect the rest of our history course to those current events, looking for patterns and answering that age-old question for kids of why does this matter? Why are we learning history? That has been really successful and exciting, and we've really put a lot of our effort this year into building that unit up, making it more interactive, adding projects into it, and making that really the center of that entire modern U.S. History course. And we've also launched a series of writers workshops programs with our college prep students in there, which are, we've taken a look at some of the MCAS data and things like that coming out of 10th grade, realizing that as, as a team, we wanted to focus more on those specific skills around thesis-driven writing and research and evidence. So we have started last year and have integrated this kind of workshop model along the way that's been exciting, but also something that we're still in progress and always trying to improve on that. And then finally, 11th grade. This one is really exciting too. So 11th grade has seen the largest curriculum shift in terms of the new frameworks that came out. The loss of that World History I class in eighth grade means that when kids get to 11th grade, they haven't really had any world history since sixth and seventh grade, which is like a current events and geography curriculum. And so, you know, it's hard to try to take two years of world history and make up for it right in one year. So our teachers have really been working together in a PLC this year to think about how we can teach world history in a way that incorporates a lot of what students are losing by not having that World History I course, but making sure that we're focusing on the modern world as well, because that is kind of the era that's most relevant to students, and we don't want to lose that, that element either. So they have done a really incredible job of kind of integrating themes. So for example, when we're talking about modern Africa or the Middle East, we're going back and talking about colonial and then also pre-colonial history, kind of bringing that thread all the way through. And that also gets us to the other shift that I told you about, which is the civics project. So as a department, we have decided to put that required social studies civics project for high school students in the 11th grade curriculum. This is, I think, a really bold move. A lot of people hear civics project, and they automatically think U.S. History, right? We're going to do something America-based. But kids have that, and they're going to get that in eighth grade, and they get it in ninth grade and 10th grade. So we thought that this is a really unique opportunity to build on some of the big capstone projects that we'd already developed and use that as kind of the final experience for, for juniors. This is the last required course that they take with us. And so their final project now is this Global Issues Project. We have, it has been run before with our AP World classes. If anybody has seen Mr. Utaro's or had a student in those classes, you probably are familiar with kind of the basis of this project. But it will bring kids together. There will be a big community night where community members and parents can come and interact with kids around this project. For this year, we have our AP students doing it with the community night, and then we also have our honors and CP kids doing the project, and we hope next year that we'll be able to open up both community nights and hopefully serve as a model. The state is looking for model programs right now and projects. So we are hoping to build this and offer this up as, as an exemplar for what people could do for the civics project. And I just wanted to give a quick snapshot. In addition to our three required courses, I think one of our strengths as a department is this rich elective offering that we have. We have, we offer five different AP courses in addition to a whole variety of CP and honors electives ranging from criminal justice to some of the more traditional social sciences like psychology and sociology, to a great public speaking course, and then you can see our specialized courses there too. And next year, we're offering two new ones, which is really exciting. Dr. Smith. modern world as well, because that is kind of the era that's most relevant to students and we don't want to lose that element either. So they have done a really incredible job of kind of integrating themes. So for example, when we're talking about modern Africa or the Middle East, we're going back and talking about colonial and then also pre-colonial history, kind of bringing that thread all the way through. And that also gets us to the other shift that I told you about, which is the civics project. So as a department, we have decided to put that required social studies civics project for high school students in the 11th grade curriculum. This is, I think, a really bold move. A lot of people hear civics project and they automatically think US History, right? We're going to do something America-based. But kids have that and they're going to get that in eighth grade and they get it in ninth grade and 10th grade. So we thought that this is a really unique opportunity to build on some of the big capstone projects that we'd already developed and use that as kind of the final experience for juniors. This is the last required course that they take with us. And so their final project now is this global issues project. We have, it has been run before with our AP World classes. If anybody has seen Mr. Utaro's or had a student in those classes, you probably are familiar with kind of the basis of this project. But it will bring kids together. There will be a big community night where community members and parents can come and interact with kids around this project. For this year, we have our AP students doing it with the community night. And then we also have our honors and CP kids doing the project and we hope next year that we'll be able to open up both community nights and hopefully serve as a model. The state is looking for model programs right now and projects. So we are hoping to build this and offer this up as an exemplar for what people could do for the civics project. And I just wanted to give a quick snapshot. In addition to our three required courses, I think one of our strengths as a department is this rich elective offering that we have. We offer five different AP courses in addition to a whole variety of CP and honors electives ranging from criminal justice to some of the more traditional social sciences like psychology and sociology, to a great public speaking course. And then you can see our specialized courses there too. And next year, we're offering two new ones, which is really exciting. Dr. Smith will be offering Positive Psychology, which is a course that looks at a newer field of psychology around empathy and happiness and, just as the title reads, kind of the more positive aspect as opposed to disorders and some of the things that you study in traditional psychology. And then I will be teaching a class called Race in America, which is going to trace the history of race and eugenics all the way back to the founding of the country and look at rhetoric, laws, and social customs around race and how different racial groups interact. So we're really excited about some of these new things that are coming up for us. I thought though, since I was presenting in May, I always love to have a student voice, you know, whether that be students visiting or through video, but I thought that, given that it's May and they have one week left of school, that I would pull my last, very last strings with the senior class this year. Because, you know, we can go, I could go on and on about all of the things that we do here and how much I love the work that we're doing and believe in it. But I think what's really incredible for me is to see kids who go on to do things in the social sciences, who leave here with passions for issues related to these directly and indirectly, right, and use them in real life. So I've invited Rihanna and Tess to come and share with you. These are two graduating seniors who I'm so sad will be leaving us in a week, but who both have really interesting areas of passion. Rihanna worked hard to pass that civics bill that I mentioned before. Last year, she was knocking on the door of senators and congressmen at the State House trying to get that bill passed. But they're both, like I said, going off to college next year to study this. So I just invited them to come and talk to you a little bit about where they're going next, because that's a vision we don't always get to see. So Rihanna and Tess, you guys can come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So I'm Rihanna and...
This is Tess.
Hey. And so basically, as Ms. Burns was talking about, I advocated for the civics bill in the State House last April, I believe, and then the bill passed in the fall. And I think civics education is really important and this project offers students an opportunity to have a project-based learning. And I think that's not only a great thing because it's collaborative and you get to work together and work with students, but I think a lot of students don't realize that government touches all aspects of our life, whatever issue you're passionate about, whether it's STEM or English or math or even politics, what I want to study. I think that you can learn a lot from doing civics project and being aware of what's going on in the world. And so I think it's a great learning opportunity for students and that's why I wanted to see more civics opportunities in our district. I think when my grandparents went to school, that generation, they had required civics classes and we don't necessarily have that anymore. And we have the AB Gov course, which I'm taking right now and it's great. And so I think it's really exciting to have more opportunities for students.
Will you tell them what you're doing next year?
Sure. So I'm going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison as a political science major and I can't wait to get there. There's so much to do for me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tess. I'm also a student here at Algonquin. And next year, I'm going off to Cornell University to study at their School of Industrial and Labor Relations. And kind of what that program does is it talks a lot about workplace policy and training leaders in the workplace to kind of advance as a bit of like social justice promoting workers' rights and like training people to understand and work with others to understand policy and lead, especially as the workplace is changing, kind of be able to adjust and help people through that. And I'm really excited for the opportunity. They have projects working and helping, they've helped their cafeteria staff negotiate their contracts and with that conflict resolution piece. They work with workers in Buffalo, which is kind of this like Rust Belt city and they're kind of transforming the like job landscaping there and working there. I'm really excited to take part in all of that next year. And I wouldn't have gotten into it without the history programs through the social studies department here at Algonquin. I come from a medical family. I've always been interested in that like kind of healthcare route, but it wasn't until taking like AP US here and like looking into some of the issues involving healthcare in our country and changing policies that I really started thinking more on like the policy side and that there's that kind of cross-disciplinary thing where I can take that interest in science and also with, combine it with interest in like statistics and social studies and kind of explore all my interests in this program. And then the work I've been doing with Ms. Burns and Current Affairs, it's really opened my eyes to a lot of really modern issues that are going on and what the skills I will learn next year to kind of have a voice in the future.
I mean, who wouldn't want to teach that? I just will give Tess a shout out too. She wrote a paper about workers' rights in the gig economy with Uber and Lyft. And it was probably one of the best papers I've ever read, including college-level papers. So, you know, I think we have incredible students here and it's so exciting to hear them be passionate about society and these issues that impact so many people and also to be going off and finding agency and a voice, right, in their next steps. So I will wrap up just kind of with a glimpse into the future, I guess, goals for next year. Obviously, we have a lot on our plates that we are managing with our curriculum shifts, but I think we have a few things that we really want to focus on in the coming year or two around these ideas of globalization, collaboration, and community. So we're going to continue working in that 11th grade year. That is a big curriculum for us, especially as we develop this capstone project and grow that project and be looking out for some invitations as we open up the community night for that event. That's really exciting and I think it's an opportunity to really get our kids involved in a lot of project-based learning, as Rihanna was talking about, but also exploring issues all around the world and looking at different ways that they can be levers of power to change things that are going on. We're also looking at building a global citizenship certificate. So this would be a pathway for students. We're working on our details right now, but that kids could take certain classes all across the school and do a project in their senior year that would earn them a special commendation at graduation, this global citizenship that kind of helps globalize their studies. In terms of collaboration, we plan to continue working and growing the PLC program that we have so far. We've developed some really strong teams, especially at the ninth and 11th grade. We want to support that work. And we also are really excited to continue working with the middle school teachers. It's been really great to have that opportunity to see this program more holistically and to get involved with other schools too. So we plan on continuing that next year. And then continuing to increase our community involvement, having community members come in. We've been working with Career Day and expanding our guest speaker profile, but really expanding opportunities for students to hear from people who are doing this stuff in real life, right, and that real-life experience. So thank you so much. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. You can come back.
That was fantastic. Thank you. To say, so my daughter takes Mr. Utaro's AP class and loves him as a teacher. He sings like different parts of his class.
That is true.
She had Mr. Holland at Trotter, so she thinks they're very similar and loves it. But she's also loving to take the women in history classes and she took Holocaust with you, which is fantastic to offer all those different classes for this.
Thank you.
So it's been good.
Dan.
Outstanding. So, and you ladies are incredibly well-spoken. So we were all chatting over there like, oh my word, does this school turn out some amazing students? So incredibly well-done. My question would be for you two ladies, is there anything that you would like to see? I know there's a lot of initiatives for the program going forward. You're leaving. Is there anything that you think that you would also like to see the program mature? Whether it be guest speakers coming into the classroom, students going out to, you know, field trips that you've thought about and wanted to do that, you know, that could enhance your learning experience? What do you think? Or is it all set?
Well, first of all, I think it's great that Ms. Burns is talking about how it's incorporated
with world history, but also US history, because she makes a good point that it's important that we talk about global issues and not only issues that affect our country. But I like the idea of having more speakers. I think that's always great. In the library, we have a library speaker series and I've had the opportunity to come hear a few people speak. And it's been really fascinating to learn about different people's careers and I think that's always really valuable. We do Career Day too. And there was a parent that came in who used to work for the State Department and it really changed my understanding of what it would be like to work for a government department. And so I think that was a great opportunity.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, I think a lot of the projects that I was talking about, the civics project going forward, it'll be a great opportunity to kind of apply that knowledge in the classroom and learning about these world events and getting more people exposed to that. I feel like a lot of young people, they're as with like the internet and technology are becoming more aware about, but there's still a lot of people that don't exactly know what's going on at home, much less in the greater world. And to kind of take that knowledge and be able to apply some of our skills from other disciplines and like come together with something is a really cool opportunity to kind of go above and beyond what is like typically offered within the curriculum and especially the concentration you were talking about for like 11th and 12th graders. It's a really great opportunity to give really motivated students a chance to show kind of their dedication to these issues and again, go above and beyond and show their talents and what they can do to make a difference.
Excellent, thank you ladies.
So when I was in school, hate people that start like that, but I mean seriously, and I don't even think it's when I was in school. I think in a lot of different schools, even today, social studies is just about opening up a textbook and memorizing, you know, some facts about whatever it is that you're studying and regurgitating it on a test and then, and I know for myself, I retained nothing, zero. So I applaud your efforts to, you know, make things interactive, make things relevant, you know, have the guest speakers, have projects that, because that's just so much more, it's just so much more relevant to have these kids look and see and feel, you know, like it's easy to do in science, but it's really hard in social studies. So I applaud all of your efforts. And Lord only knows that, given what's going on in current events, we need social studies. And so thank you for creating wonderful, engaged civic individuals.
Thank you. I mean, all the credit goes to the teachers in my department. I work with a really incredible group of people who are passionate and dedicated and the goal is to never be what you described in the beginning, for sure.
Don't be me.
Thank you.
So I ask this from every department chair when they make presentations, do you have enough resources? Are we bouncing kids out of elective courses because we, there's too many signing up and we don't have enough teachers for it? Or do the kids get to elect virtually all of the courses that they want to elect rather than, you know, have to shuffle off to a study hall or something like that? Are we okay there in your department?
I mean, I would always say we could use more resources, no matter what, right? But I do think we are, I mean, there are decisions that we have to make for obvious reasons, right? We can't offer every single seat that's ever signed up for because of scheduling, just, you know, by the way that the schedule works, some kids can't always take every elective that they want to. But for the most part, I think we offer the vast majority of kids seats in a wide range of courses and there's always something else a kid can do. So if it doesn't, you know, it might not always be the number one choice, but we offer a wide range of opportunities and I don't think kids are getting shut out in any way. I think in terms of resources, the thing I think is honestly the most important and is probably not one that people talk a lot about is that I really appreciate the support in the budget for professional development. I think that's really important. It's so important, you know, we have, we're lucky to have a district partnership with Primary Source, which is a really great professional development organization out of Boston. I've had, you know, we have the opportunity to bring in Facing History and all of these really great workshops and opportunities that keep teachers engaged and excited, keep us learning. And I think that's a really important resource that we don't always talk a lot about. And I'm appreciative for the opportunities and I would say that that's always one that we could never have too much, right? There's never too much professional development.
And just a second question, if I could. Podcasts, terrific idea. I love the thought of it. At the same time, I'm sure they're not free. I mean, do we have, are we tracking usage? Do we know how many kids are listening to the podcasts and kind of, you know, so that we can see how that's going?
I'm smiling because we have a teacher who tracks it constantly and he can tell you every country that has ever listened to one of our podcasts. So the equipment, like I said, we got through a grant from South Borough Education Foundation. Podcasts are actually relatively cheap. You can have a license for a year that's just, I believe, under $25. Don't quote me on that, but it's actually one of the easiest types of media to produce and put out there. And you get it out on the platform and it goes to, you know, we can put it on Apple Podcasts, we can put it up on Spotify. So that's actually been a pretty...
Can you make them all in here?
Well, we've been making them in classrooms and then the library very generously donated this room to us. So now we have like a real space and studio that is much better acoustically especially for doing it, yeah.
So again, you know, I don't know, somebody puts together a podcast on a particular topic, you know, two months later, how many students have listened to it?
I don't want to quote specific numbers because I might get them wrong, but I would say we've had 100 people listen to the episodes over the time. So it's more. Somebody who's on the team that does the podcast is waiting for, many, many more, hundreds of listens. So, and you know, it's a fun resource. And in addition to being a resource for kids, it's also a really great way for them to kind of connect with teachers, right, and hear things that they might not get to in a class, get in a little bit deeper. And I'm really excited about the opportunity for students to present ideas and say, we want to do an episode on this and do the research and bring that together, because those are important life skills in addition to being interesting content.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and it's just absolutely fantastic. I mean, it's, like I want to say, I want to come in and audit a couple of those classes if possible. But it's amazing with the limited resources and finances that you're able to add two other classes onto it and those are wonderful classes to have. And I'd like to thank you for your enthusiasm. And I can see how, you know, enthusiasm goes from the top down and how it goes also to the wonderful representation. You have your Rihanna and Tess. So you are going to be wonderful, both of you are going to be wonderful representatives of our school, going out there as you go and further your educational career and then graduate. And wish you the best of luck. You're such eloquent speakers and enthusiasm. It's amazing. I mean, their heads over tops over what we thought we were tops in this whole way. Whoa, whoa. But congratulations to you and wonderful presentation tonight. So thank you. And thank you for being such a wonderful representation again at Algonquin when you go out into the world. Thank you.
I say it all the time, but I feel lucky because we're teaching kids who will change the world, for sure.
I'm just going to pile on with the accolades here for a reason. It's kind of funny, but just before I came here, I was having dinner with my daughter and son and my daughter, she's in 10th grade here and she's taking the AP US History course. And she said it was her favorite course she's had this year. And I can tell because she comes home and she's engaged, she's type, you know, they do relate, they do a great job relating to current events. She's always coming home fired up about something and, you know, I couldn't be happier with that. So I just want to commend you for the great job you're doing and thank you, you two students, for being here. Appreciate that and best of luck to you. It sounds like you're off to a fantastic start.
Just quickly, I'll touch on one thing that impressed me is that mission statement. I know it takes a great deal of work to bring vertical alignment and horizontal alignment and to come up with a statement like that. I think that's a great anchor document for, you know, all the kids in the district. So I know that was a lot of work and I'm glad the professional development was valued all that time together is a key to the success for the kids.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next is the 2019-2020 School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments.
So in your pocket, in the faculty, this is the liaison assignment from last year. I don't think we necessarily need to take any action on this tonight other than to reflect and maybe absorb all of the wonderful opportunities that exist for participation in subcommittees and maybe consider assignment next month when we reconvene in June. Little good news for the warrant. It's later, you'll read a little bit about it in the MICE newsletter that I closed, but as we contemplated, could be available to sign warrants. In 2014, Mass General Law changed their legislation to require cities and towns, or to give the option to cities and towns to have one signer on payroll and warrants. They neglected to reference specifically regional school districts, given that it's government and processes. It took five... Given that it's government and processes, it took five years to correct the absence of regional school committee, but they did. And now it will be up to the school committee if they choose to have one signer on warrants or payroll. A backup is always a good idea, but we no longer have to have a rush to Central to sign warrants so that we can process them by the town's vote, uh, required dates. So that's a little bit of good news.
Need a motion for that? No? Okay.
A motion. It's just a fact now.
So the next is the superintendent's report to the committee.
I would request the indulgence of the committee and we're, not that I want Andy to be as probably on deck any longer than he is as he is pinch hitting for Dr. Walsh this evening, but Christine Teague is in the audience. I think the last time we had her in the audience, she got home at about two o'clock in the morning because we're a little bit late. And so I would ask if we could move her up on the agenda, Andy, if that's-
Yep.
I know you're ready to go over there. I can see it. Just to sort of be a little curious in the drive that she has to get back to New Bedford. And the request this evening, of course, would be for reasons, more reasons than we have time to eloquently provide this evening, I would request that the committee tonight vote her reappointment as a district treasurer.
So moved. Second, yeah, second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Christine is here. If anyone, if anyone would like her to give a brief update or have questions for her?
We're all done with, we're all done with the bond reissuance, right? That's all, that's behind us now. We made our $800,000, or whatever it was. I think it was about 800 grand, wasn't it?
Eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Keep doing that, we'll, we'll reappoint you every year.
And the timing was crucial because rates have moved. So it was perfect timing. But I also would like to take the opportunity to say to Christine Johnson, it's been a real joy and pleasure working with you. I've been here about two and a half years now. We've had some difficult times, but also some very good times. And also, I think the school committee has made excellent choices as far as the new superintendent, assistant superintendent and the new business administrator. I will work collectively with them in ensuring a smooth transition in my position as treasurer. Christine, I'll miss you.
I'll miss you too. But we always have the name in common and our cell phone calls at 11 o'clock at night to make sure we're ready for, it's just been such a joy to work with you.
Thank you.
Your knowledge, your skill, your always positive attitude. And I think the difficulties was challenging and we, we worked as a really strong team along with everyone at Central Office. I think we've educated just about everyone in Central Office in a collaborative way about the processes that are involved in, in what you do and what we do on a regular basis. So from the bottom of my heart, I, I don't know what we would have done if you weren't in that office, sort of pulling along. And Christine also helped with the implementation of some of our eye vision updates in the area of business, particularly the receivables module and just bringing us into the 21st century. So it's been, seems like yesterday, but it seems like it's been years, the last two and a half.
I just would like to say, I, I also think the people in the finance office have done a significant job in improving policy, procedure and things that have assisted me. When I first came on, I was taking two months to reconcile a monthly cash statement. Now we're done, for the month of May, I was done by May 7th. We hadn't even got the bank statements. We get them online and everything. So we've made significant progress and they're balanced right to the penny. So.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe journey back to the whaling country. Also at this time, maybe because she's not here, but we do, and we have been in the last three years, appointing an assistant treasurer. I know Lynn Winter has been in that role. And I would recommend, for no day-to-day purposes, but just to have a backup of signatory and to have that position in place, I would recommend that we be appointing Lynn.
So moved. Second.
All right, so move by Paul, second by Dan. Paul in favor?
Thank you.
And do we have to, just what Joe Machwe about the editorial?
We can go right to the principals report. I think Andy would be really happy about that.
Whatever, whatever. Good evening. So this month's principals reports jam packed with all the great things that are happening here at the school. So I'm just going to highlight some. If you notice at the top of the report, there's some artwork up there. That's artwork by Mr. Hanson, one of our art teachers here. He's retiring this year after many years here. We have a gallery up of his personal artwork right now, up in the Gallery of the Burrows. That's on display to June 7th. And just kind of a testimony to all the great things he's done here and the work he's done with the art classes that have come through. In terms of just some academic stuff, National Honors, Science National Honor Society recently went to St. Mary's with Dr. Walsh and their advisor, Ms. Thompson. They had the opportunity to work with the 4th, 5th, 7th and 8th grade students who participated in the science fair. They were actually judges of some of the science fair projects. It was a great opportunity for those kids and some networking done with the lower levels too at St. Mary's. Just, just a wonderful event there. Mr. Godbout, Ms. Muse, they created a kind of co-curricular, came together for a little project that they did with the tiny tomahawks in Mr. Godbout's psychology class where the students in the psychology class wrote and illustrated their own pieces of work and then went into the tiny tomahawks and read it to the, to the kids there. The kids loved it. The little kids loved it. The big kids loved it. It was just a, a fun event for all. Some of the clubs last month, our sophomore class, in, in addition to their advisors and, and others, participated in Northborough's annual town cleanup. This was part of their community service mission project. DECA recently went to the international competition in Orlando. They had 31 students attend, competing in 23 categories and eight students attended in leadership academies. Recently, we had our senior ball. The senior ball was up at Wachusett. Despite the weather, it was still a great event. They had a little fire out there in the fire pit. There was dancing. There was even ice, an ice cream bar, which again, despite the weather, was a big hit for the kids. And it was just a, a nice event for the senior class. Junior prom is scheduled for this coming Saturday. The class advisors, myself, have been putting that together to just make it a wonderful event. That'll be at Union Station this, this, this coming week where it's been in the past. Algonquin Writing Center participated in this, had this great opportunity to do writing for a cause. In total, they raised $1,570 for 826 Boston, which is a nonprofit group of writing and publishing organization that empowers traditionally underserved students in the Boston area. This was a cross-curricular thing that students were going in and using all kinds of different skills that they've gone, learned through the writing center here at the school. In athletics, we had our T-Hawks of the Month, John By for boys track, Andre Hurd for boys rugby, Christina DeFudis for girls track, Dominic Russo for boys lacrosse, and Mia Barletta for girls tennis. Our captains' breakfast was actually held this morning for the captains of the spring sports. The, the focus of that was what is my role as a captain and why was I voted team captain? So they continue their leadership development for both in athletic, in the athletic field and also outside of that. And it's just a, a nice opportunity for those kids who are there. MCAS and math, uh, math and science are both preparing for their MCAS sessions coming up. You'll see a picture of the frog there. That's Ms. Mott dressed up as a frog in celebration of National Save the Frog Day, which the kids loved. It was just kind of a fun little thing that Ms. Mott came in dressed up as a frog. Algonquin Games start June 3rd. This is a tremendous opportunity for the district where students from all levels in the district come to Algonquin, participate in the games here. The Unified Singers kick things off with the National Anthem and it's just a great day. A lot of classes, a lot of teachers bring their class out to support the students participating in it. And it's just kind of a fun celebration as a district that we get to be a part of as well. Mr. Clark, Ms. Ruffo, kind of combining forces here in the Applied Arts and Technology Department with a new news series called Money Talks in that students are discussing different topics such as credit cards, college, college financing, employment and spending trends. These are being recorded through Mr. Clark's Video Production Two class, so it's really all student centered and student engaged. The Fine Arts Department recently had the opportunity to participate in the Micah Gold Medal Showcase at world famous Symphony Hall. So a tremendous opportunity for them. Our 9th grade, Brittany referenced the big group in the 9th grade. That is something that has really just flourished this year. Recently, they did a, hosted something called Recon, which was a conference of reconstruction modeled after the Comic-Con. This big group in the 9th grade has really challenged all the students involved with it and pushed them to kind of their next level. So it's been a great, great thing like Brittany had explained earlier. Ms. Honey here in the library has been working on expanding the use of our data system and we use Gale Database and that is up 2,000%. So students using the research database here at the library is way up and, and it's due to a lot of work that Ms. Honey has put in, in the background. We recently had at a faculty meeting, Future Teacher Signing Day, which was put on with guidance and the administration. And this was, this was a neat event, first time we've had it here at Algonquin. It's something that Desi kind of inspired and where students who are going into the field of education came down, they just kind of talked about, briefly about their experience here at Algonquin, where they're going to school next year and, the field of education that they're going into. So it was a really nice event for the faculty and for the students that were involved in it. And they got little certificates and it was just a nice time. In English, the, the Harbinger, part of the, and part of the journalism program here, recently participated in the New England Scholastic Press Association Spring Conference. And there, at that conference, they won the highest award, the All-New England Award. So congratulations to Harbinger. They've, they've done some great things over the years and just continue to do that. The physical education and health classes have been outside most of the time with the weather. And their, their project adventure course right now is, is out on the adventure course, doing a lot of team building, problem solving initiatives, that kind of thing that is using cross-curricular work on all levels. And sometimes the kids don't even realize it, which is a neat thing about that. French students partnered with the cooking class recently to do a cooking demo on French dishes and Mr. Member kind of fielded that and led that through. And lastly, kind of in celebration of the spirit of April and May and what's been going on with the teacher appreciation and administrative appreciation days that go with that, on behalf of the administration here, we just want to thank the communities. Thank you guys for the support over the years, for your support right now. Thank the parents, the students, and just everyone involves that, involved in this system that, that makes it work and makes it so great and what it is. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And back to more great news. The enrollments are in your packet, not a significant change from last month. We are, of course, watching them very closely as we close out the FY19 year and look at our enrollments from our 8th grade to 19th. That information really won't be known until August when everyone has continued their shifting and their movements. The FY19 General Fund Expenditure Report is in your packet. I would request a vote to approve until audited. I do, I just want to add one comment. I want to commend Mike Moserino again for his very excellent job of managing for really the first year your athletic budget. It's really been positive experience and not only what he's budgeted, but also those revolving accounts. I know it's a challenging role to take on with all of the teams and clubs and active, have, and done a great job with the budget. I'm pleased to say we are in probably the best shape at this point in the year we've been for a while with those balance. So it's good.
Do I move the, or you accept until audited the Northborough South Borough Regional School District Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of April 30th, 2019, as well as the statement of revenue for the same period?
Second.
I do want to comment on the revenue report. Last month, we were a little concerned that athletics received for 60.79%. I predicted around a 68%. I was low by 11%, but I'm delighted I was. And so we're about 80%. And because of the revolving account, the watch rely, we are going to be able to meet what our balance was going into FY19. So we're in good shape.
Good to hear.
Paul Business, Dan's last update.
You should have all received the, first I'll go with the guide to athletics since Andy stole my thunder a little bit. So, a little bit. I'll, you know what? I'll start with the spring because I like to give a little bit of a spring update of where we're at in regards to athletics. I can tell you that the weather really has played a role into the season so far and we're doing a great job adjusting in regards to our staff and our athletes. Getting the crunch down, we only get about two weeks left of the season. So, and we got a lot of teams that are playoff bound, so that's what I'm hoping to get across from today. So, April, we had our T-Hawk of the Month Award, which Assistant Principal McGowan already, Andy McGowan already said. We have our Athletic Council Breakfast that took place today. And what, what you did not include is what we did for the first time was we also included our Athletic Council members, who are also potential future captains, leaders. That might be freshmen and sophomores. We've never included them into our captain's breakfast, but they could be potential leaders and they are setting a soul, setting an example of leadership within their teams. And it doesn't matter if it's a freshman, sophomore, junior or senior. They're always there for, you know, to learn. And so, everything that we talked about, about leadership today, they were able to take in. Our overall season record of where we stand right now, baseball is 10 and 4 overall, which just gave them the playoff berth. Our boys volleyball are going to go to the playoffs with a 12 and 4 record. Boys rugby are 1 and 2 with a win over Blue Hills and girls rugby 1 and 2 with a win over Waymouth. They got, they both have two games this week. Cheerleading, which attended Nationals in Georgia in April, came in first and within their division. So it was great to see. Boys and girls track, 7 and 1 overall, 3 and 1 in mid-watch. And girls track just won the district class A championship. I was going to say congratulations to Tess Race, but she's no longer here. So unbelievable, unbelievable job, girls track. Girls tennis, right now, sitting at 10 and 0 undefeated. Boys tennis, 10 and 1. So they're both on their way into the playoffs. Boys lacrosse, 12 and 2. Just had a big win over St. John's the other day. Girls lacrosse, 10 and 4. Both have punched their ticket to playoffs. So, and our Unified Track Teams had, just finished up their season with meets against Hopington, Marlboro, Westboro and the Shoban. And they're going to be going to their district meet next week. And our girls co-op team, who are 5 and 1 overall, we co-op with Westboro and they just won the Central Math League Championship for the first time, which was on May 1st. So, following up from winter, a lot of great accomplishments from our teams in the winter. Going into playoffs, we're getting right into the spring. There's only two weeks left. Looking forward to playoff time. One thing that I do want to mention is that we have a MIA Coach of the Year, Kevin Hausman for Unified Track. And I was just informed that the other day for, for Kevin and, and he was nominated as a teacher coach. Kevin has a tremendous impact on the lives of our student athletes. And Kevin has demonstrated high expectations, hard work ethic, encouraged the value of self-discipline and his commitment to inclusion. So he will be recognized at an award dinner next, on May 23rd at MIA office. And also, just have to say a quick thank you to the Booster Club. The level of success will not be possible without the hardworking student athletes that represent our school and dedicated coaching staff, a tremendous supportive community. On behalf of the entire athletic department, I need to send special thanks to the Booster Club for their continuous involvement in the athletic program. In addition to the team reps that put countless hours organizing apparel, senior recognition nights, team banquets, not to mention the huge fan support. So we can always count on the Booster Club. on the Booster Club when times in need. Some, some information regarding some projects that we've done over the last year that have been completed, our scoreboard, softball scoreboard, has been done and completed, which is fantastic, it got the refacing. Our JV football field got the refacing of that, and we're going to continuously work in the future to work for, to upgrade the gym and our weight room, just everything we can for our student-athletes to prepare for their seasons, in the season and offseason. And we're going to currently work on upgrading the consoles that need to be looked at within our B, A, B, and C gym, which the original console is from 15 years ago. So, we're working on the scoreboards with boosters that are right behind the project and support us 100 percent. And also, I have to put a plug in, and I hope we, if we have any golfers here, we have our golf tournament. The biggest fundraiser we have for boosters and athletics is on Tuesday, June 18th, so we can all register now. We're hoping, sort of like our surrounding towns, Shrewsbury, to get 144 golfers out there. Last year, we had about 80. We got rained out, so it kind of changed people's plans for the, for the make-up date, but it's a, it's a great day to go out there and meet with alumni, and current coaches, and parents, and the community to represent athletics and the Booster Club. And I have to say a special thanks to, to those who make this possible, my first year working with Christine and, and the administration here, so thank you, Central Office Superintendent Johnson, Principal Walsh, the Administration Team, athletic trainer, our facilities, and especially Susan Baberds, the Administrative Assistant. And so, I look forward to giving you a great report, hopefully, you know, soon about the results of our spring, but it's, I'm really looking forward to, to the end of the year and see what it has to come for our accomplishments for our students. That's the spring report.
Do you need a water break, Mike?
So, we can move on to the Guide to Athletics, where I believe everybody had a copy of the Guide to Athletics. What you have, you should have the summary sheet, which is a list of the general overview of the changes of the 2019-20 Guide to Athletics. Our purpose was not only to update the information included, but also provide a comprehensive look at athletics, at ARHS, and to create a user-friendly guide to update, basically, you know, our capability, we have to use interaction in our website, and the details below indicate the major changes made in each section, starting from the beginning to the end of the Guide to Athletics. Please note, this is not all-inclusive, refer to the Guide to Athletics for all specific details. I do have to throw a special thank you to our committee for all their hard work on revising the Guide to Athletics. The committee consisted of Andy McGowan, Assistant Principal, Melissa Fustino, PE teacher and coach, Emily Philbin, PE teacher, English teacher and coach, Jonathan Drisco, athletic trainer, Susan Baberds, Administrative Assistant, Lisa Dunderdale, a parent, Teresa Lee, which is a parent, had conflict in the schedule, but was a part of the original committee, Luke Ossetek, athlete and Athletic Council member, Rudy Butchneider, which is an athlete and Athletic Council, and Nick Alcock, which is our athlete and, part of our Athletic Council member. So we had a big committee that looked over this, we had several meetings, and so I just have to say thank you for the time and the consideration, the effort that we put into this document demonstrates the dedication of our student-athletes, coaches, administrators, parents alike, and shows how important and productive it is when our community work together for the benefit of our student-athletes and their families. So I just wanted to throw that there and say thank you to the committee. Thank you, Andy. And so, as we go through here, we look at Section 1, not a lot of policy change, like I said, a lot of updating. We have the Welcome to Athletics, we just, we just aligned the philosophy with our district webpage. In the objectives, in the draft, we have junior varsity, if a freshman were now replaced with junior varsity 1 and junior varsity 2, it's no longer a freshman and JV team, it's 1 and 2. So we updated that. We have participation prerequisites, is the new word. We have a registration now to our website, we have the Athletic Fee section, which is the additional information, and a link to our webpage. Updated the academic eligibility, which is now in line with MIA, which no longer says 20 credits, but it says four major courses to be eligible, which are equivalent to the English courses. And then we added, if a student because, becomes ineligible, the parents or guardians will be notified by a school administrator, so it's just a follow-up process. Team information, we changed cutting procedure to selection policies, added a section for our ARHS Booster Club, because it's never, there was never a section in there recognizing in our relationship with the Booster Club. We, Algonquin requirements, we changed school obligations to school discipline process, and basically just added the wording, but may include, but not limited to. We removed the weight room objectives and made one section, just weight room, weight room rules, and then we updated our transportation language and included a link to the transportation form. When working with this, the, the next section with, which is safety, we were very mindful with this section, with the hope that in turn, you know, we hope to improve and clarify the accident and injury reports, so we updated the safety section, included new information for user-friendly links, which we have our AED locations, our emergency action plans, our concussion and impact information, our heat, illness prevention, and included a link to the athletic webpage for further resources. So we'll be continuously updating our website with the links to these resources. We updated the accident and injury report language, and we updated the insurance information and language. Communication part in Section 5, we just put later in the guide, and the section basically represents the protocol between player, parent, coach, which has always been in there, we just relocated it within the guide, and has also explained at our preseason sports night. And then the, lastly, the MIA rules needed to be updated in regards to the chemical health and bona fide team rule, because the MIA rule changed for bona fide team rule, which no waiver is needed for a weekend, it still has to be agreed upon by the athletic director, coach, and principal, and updated the chemical health rule in accordance with the MIA, which now includes vaping. We spent a lot of time and updated it, looked at it, and, and we had a lot of involvement from parents, from coaches, from administrators, and I think this draft that we put out there was a good starting point.
If I could, thank you for the update, certainly a terrific spring, I, you know, you see the results in the newspaper every day as I, as I watch it, and the teams are all doing terrific. As far as the updates to the guide, it seems to me a couple of months ago, we talked about how few athletes took that concussion protocol test, the impact test. There's nothing in here that I see that kind of leans towards a, you know, an encouragement of student-athletes at Algonquin to take that test. There's a section on participation and what's expected, it says, "We need you to take a physical," that's terrific. I thought a couple of months ago, we said we were going to try a little harder to get them to take that test. I'd really love to see something in some future issue of this, if not, if not this one, that, that kind of pushes that a little bit. It just, you know, for the committee members that, you know, maybe forgot, weren't here for the conversation, I think last year, like, two athletes or something took the test. I mean, it was a paltry number, ridiculously paltry number, and, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's in their best interest, and it's in our best interest to keep them healthy. I would say it again, we need to figure out some way to encourage that, a lot, a lot more than we have been doing historically, and, you know, this, this might have been a good place to start. Just my two cents.
So, it's a draft?
Oh, terrific.
The reason it's a draft?
Well, there you go.
And we, and it was purposely identified as such, so that there is time, and when, Mike wasn't AD at the time, but when this impact testing was really put into place, it was after a lot of meetings and discussions, and a lot of involvement with our wellness providers in the district. So, all of what you're referring to is in a format that can be lifted and inserted, because that was the intention of all of the literature that was produced, including from the medical standpoint, but also the process here at Algonquin. So instead of a massive rewrite, it could be an insertion of what was already created by a team of folks who were well-invested in bringing impact testing into the district. So for Mike, I think Mike's sitting, maybe thinking, okay, the meeting is in June, and we have 26,000 games to schedule, but it, it exists in a format, so I would offer that as, you know, digging it out and, and up, and then an insertion.
An insertion, okay.
And then, I know at the last meeting, or a couple of meetings, we talked about really making that known at all of the parent information sessions and
Yes.
Doing a little tutorial on how to access it.
We hand out, we do a hand, yeah, we do a handout at each
So, all that's possible.
Super.
So I have to, I do have to say, after the spring meeting, there were handouts.
Oh, terrific.
As opposed to all the other meetings where you had to go in the athletic office to get the handout. So I do appreciate the fact that you brought it to the meeting. As far as spring sports, though, I have to say, like, this is my favorite time of year, because I love driving into the high school and seeing every field, like, filled with kids and parents and, you know, it's just
No place to park.
No place to park. It's fun, like, it's a great, like, it's just fun to see everyone so active and outside, and, and the rain hasn't really impacted a whole lot yet, so, for a little
For lacrosse. Yeah, lacrosse, they've been good so far, baseball, tennis.
I have, I have not, when I wear my little jacket yet.
I trust rugby wants to play in the rain?
What's that?
Rugby wants to play in the rain, right?
Yes, and they may have an opportunity on Friday.
Mike, I'd just like to thank you for the presentations. I think this might be your third one that you have done this year, might be your third or the fourth, and it's nice to keep us in tabs with what's going on, and I hope that you'll continue it, and congratulations, and next year, you know, in, in keeping us so informed and getting our input, especially, like, even all the members, especially Paul, bringing that impact concussion, which is very important, but congratulations on your first year.
Thank you.
I got to give kudos to Mike for leading the committee on the Guide to Athletics, he did a great job facilitating it, all the meetings with everyone's schedules and, and so forth, and just facilitating the whole thing, so, nice work with that.
I'd just commend Doc, Director, not Doctor, Director of Moserino as well. I have the occasion to see him from time to time in the athletic fields, and he is everywhere. And he really is, from what I can see, enjoying this role, and I think we, the school picked the right person to be the Athletic Director for our student-athletes, and, you know, you told me about the walkie-talkies that you got now, too, which is outstanding, so, you know, there's an injury, which there was, I believe a minor one on a different field, he was able to address that immediately and provide, you know, some assistance to that student-athlete. So, again, you're, you can, I can tell you are motivated and really interested in the job that you have, and we're thrilled that you're in it.
If I could, yeah, it seems, this, again, you know, just kind of glancing through it, but it's really aimed at the student and the student-athlete. Maybe a section or two that is either aimed at our coaches, or at least talks to what our expectations of our coaches are, and so that, you know, so that kind of people are aware of it, but just, you know, every now and then you end up hearing things that, you know, you'd really rather not, and, you know, just say, okay, this is, this is what we expect from the coaching staff, and this is how they should interact with you, and if they don't interact with you that way, we want to know about it. Not sure how you're going to fill that all in, and maybe in this, in this draft, you know, maybe it doesn't need to be there, but it is something you ought to keep in the back of your head, Mike.
If I may, I'll add to that, I mean, we spoke to this when you first came on board, but I think it's so important to teach our student-athletes about, you know, how to, how to win with class, how to lose with class, and that starts from, you know, surely from their own homes, but also the mentors that they have here, from you, from the coaching staff, to teach, you know, these student-athletes about the importance of good sportsmanship, you know, when the game is over and during the game as well. You know, I've seen teams, unfortunately, and I've seen them here, they weren't our kids, but they were other teams, and the chanting that they do, or the mocking that they do, the laughing that they do if someone makes an error, it's unfortunate. I never want to see our student-athletes act that way, and I haven't, which is great. So, the more that we can, you know, ensure that our coaching staff, you know, it's not win-at-all-costs, and, you know, to, to, you know, play with class, win with class, and, and of course, lose with class, I think is, will teach these athletes, you know, something now, and they'll take it, you know, with them wherever they go. So however that is, you know, message to our student-athletes and our coaches, I would love to see that continually reinforced.
I had a couple of things, following on to what Dan said, I don't know if you've been involved with Positive Coaching Alliance at all, but I have, we threw the, the Northborough Southborough Youth Lacrosse League, they, they had, all the coaches had to take some, some PCA training, and it was, it's really valuable, and, I mean, that speaks to the communication with the coach and, and the kids, keeping things positive. I think, you know, we can all agree that that's a good thing. And I just have one question about the weight room rules.
Yes.
Says no students to be in the weight room without teacher, coach, adult supervision, which I assume is for safety.
Safety, yeah.
How much of a gating factor is that, in terms of weight room use?
The weight room is, is used a lot after school by the teams, and it's constantly monitored, because we have to make sure that it's under supervision, so we had to put those, those rules have been put in place because of how, how much traffic we have going through there, to make sure that every time a student-athlete is in that weight room, they're under monitor, and if they're not, it's between myself, or the coaches, or our athletic trainer, who are constantly walking by there and make sure that that weight room is not just kids in there, there is an adult in there doing supervision, so it had to be, we had to make sure we had to reinforce that.
But I mean, is, are there enough teachers, coaches, adults available so that the weight room doesn't go unused because it's, there's no one available?
Uh, no, I, I think, no, we have plenty, plenty of, there's a little time right after school where we had to put that in there, but there is enough coaches and parents around that utilize that weight room almost every single day, but it's just to reassure them that, make sure we have it monitored.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, that's me.
My guy, my guy.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. So in a previous meeting, I submitted the draft student handbook to you with a summary, I think it was the March meeting, and we're back here for any questions and hopefully approval. It was minor changes, as I said when I submitted it to you. We had a full committee last year, which did a number of changes, but not as many this year. It was more language-based.
Dan?
I would move that we approve for the student handbook as provided. Second.
All approved. Thank you. I'd just like to thank Michelle, she seems to have inherited this project, and project ideas, with a lot of people that are involved in reviewing all of what goes in here, and interacts with legal counsel to make sure we're current on our regulations and so forth, so thank you again this year.
Sure.
Thank you. Our next is policy development, second read.
So we have a bus transportation, E240, which is a new policy for Algonquin, and I think it's important to note that we have, will have a consistent policy between Northborough, Southborough, and the region in terms of transportation, if this is approved this evening. So this is the second read, and it's the will of the committee to vote for approval. And the second policy is advertising donations and sponsorship policy, and the last time we discussed this policy, we decided to seek additional input from different community organizations, so we did Northborough-Southborough Music Association, NSPAC, APTO, and we didn't receive any additional information, but we did, we did ask for input. And again, this is a lot of input from the boosters and the community, so I think this is an exciting policy to move forward with.
So I move that we accept as provided, the policy E240, bus transportation, and policy K240, advertising donations and sponsorship policy.
Second, Dan.
Okay, so we'll go by Paul, second by Dan, and you both write, do you want to say that? Is there anyone, anyone get a chance to read over it?
I'd just like to say thanks for going, checking out on that, I mean, you know, I've been kind of a gadfly on the advertising sponsorship thing for a few meetings, I appreciate taking the time to, to check it out. Thanks very much.
If there's nothing, everyone, all those who approve? If there's nothing, everyone, all those who approve, the, the votes?
Terrific.
That's all that, okay. So maybe the same policy, or the bus one?
Yes, the same, the same policy number.
Same policy number. Our next is audience sharing.
So I wouldn't mind sharing a little bit if there's none from the audience. All right. I'm seeing none, I guess?
Sorry, were you asking for sharing?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, I was having a little side.
Ah.
Hi, my name's Lisa Dunderdale. I live at 122 Deerfoot Road in Southborough. And actually, this is my second time that I've been here in probably the past, let's see, six months. So it's a pleasure to be here again. I'd like to start off and just congratulate Christine Johnson on her retirement. And it certainly has been a pleasure to work with you for a few months. I'm sorry to see you go. And the reason that I'm commenting is, it's because Christine, well, Ms. Johnson, myself, Mike, do you believe, Mike, and another, and, I'm sorry, and another parent sat down probably in, I think it was December, and we started to talk about injury prevention for our student athletes as a result of an issue that happened at a soccer game and, earlier in the fall. And, and I had presented to you guys earlier, probably in November. So during that time, we talked about, so what are the low hanging fruits that we can, that we can pick and start to improve within the athletic department in, in Algonquin? And so one of the first things that we looked at was the handbook. And I just, after the information that we kind of discussed here and everyone's input, I just want to remind you that that handbook is really a handbook for parents and for students to understand what's the process to become involved and become a tomahawk. And, you know, what are some general guidelines? Who should we talk to to find out what the process is? And, and, you know, the comments about, well, can we put information in there to make sure our coaches are communicated to? That's an operations manual that needs to be created for the athletic department. And I have looked at the MIAA rules. I know that it is what the athletic department uses as their guidelines. It's ambiguous. I have to wonder if there is a reason for that. But if you take the time, and I've probably read through it at least five times, trying to understand how the athletic department is run. And I'm realizing now that we need to sit down and we need to create an operations manual for an athletic department that deals with hundreds of students in the year, that we know that there is an inherent risk of injury due to athletics, due to exercise, playing games. But we need to understand how we can mitigate risk the best that we can. The situation that happened in the fall when these kids were allowed to play in the torrential downpour of Hurricane Michael, it may not have been our decision to put the kids on the field because we weren't the host school. We should still be able to have the say in, say of, well, we're not putting our kids on the bus because it's not safe. It is the administration's responsibility to provide a safe environment for our kids to play. So I really, going forward, I'd like to know, you know, what next steps can we take to create this manual, to have operational procedures and policies in place? I know that the MIA, the MIAA has just looked at, they're actually adopting a new policy in July around sudden death in, in athletic, in athletic sports. And it's, it's been research that's been done by the Corey Stringer Institute. And I looked at the policy and it's probably one of the best policies that they have written. It's very, it's great guidelines for our athletic directors, but it's, I think it's the only one that I see out there. And that's something that we, we need to look at for our athletes. If we want to improve, continue to improve the athletic department, this is our next step. Communication with coaches is so important. My, my daughter did not have an injury report. She broke her, she broke her ankle. I called for it. No one had it. The nurse didn't know anything about it. We need to look at the process and the procedure behind that. Do we have the appropriate injury report in place? What is the purpose of that injury report? Is, is our AD using it to do some type of surveillance on injuries? Is there something that we need to change in our process? Did equipment fail? So we need to take a look at, this is our next step, to make sure that our students are safe. There's so many things, and I don't want to, I could continue forever and I could tell you everything that I've gone through and what I know, but I think, I'd like to ask that we come together and have our next meeting. And so we've kind of addressed some issues with the athletic handbook, which is for parents and students. You know, what do we do next? We had, we, we had so many things that we looked at. And we know that it's really difficult to make changes with the MIAA rules. It's every two years. Certainly, they need to, honestly, I think they need to take a look at how they've formatted their, their book. If you honestly think that there's direction for athletic directors in there around how they, how they manage their, their departments, et cetera. It's not there. You can't find it. And I would recommend that you all go in and take a look at it. But what we can do for Algonquin is start to create policies and procedures. And make sure that our, our coaches have their CPR cards. And, you know, what are their checkoffs at the beginning of each season? How do we communicate with our coaches? What are the safety procedures? Where, you know, we have new coaches coming in all the time. Where are the AEDs located? Do we, do our parents know where they are? Because they could potentially be the first responders. So there's so many things there. So I'm asking you, what are our next steps? And I'm happy to volunteer my time on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just had some other sharing. So if anyone hasn't read The Harbinger, I strongly encourage our view in public to do so. Not only, you know, just this edition, but every edition, but in particular this edition, which has some, a great front page article featuring our superintendent, soon to retire, and a wonderful reflection on her time as an educator and her time here at Algonquin. There are also some vintage photos of Ms. Johnson.
She used to be charred.
In here. But one of the things that kind of jumped out at me was your educational philosophy. And inspired by the characters from None Other Than the Wizard of Oz. And, which I think is very telling of, of you as an educator, you as a person, and, and something that I think would be an inspiration to, to others. And then if the committee will indulge me, I'm just going to read a very short portion of that. But it says, "Our job is to instill in all of our students the belief that they can travel about the world and have the confidence to know that they will be successful and that this place is always home, that they are welcome to come back to," Johnson said. "Like the scarecrow, students clearly need brains. But like the Tin Man, they also need the opportunities to do the work that develops the heart and the soul through the work that you do," according to Johnson. "Like the lion, students need the courage to go forward in a direction." I think that is, that is a wonderful way to, to think about what a great educational philosophy can and should be. And you have epitomized those characters with, you know, brains and heart and soul and courage and all those things throughout your career at Algonquin. And I know that it's fast approaching your retirement, but I think what you have done here and for our students will live on well past your retirement from this place. So, thank you. Do you have red slippers on today? Ruby reds?
I had a red hat, if it was lovely, but for other reasons. Thank you. It has been an honor and a privilege to work in this district for many years. To also, you know, have had other opportunities in education. I was late to the world of education and have enjoyed all of the experiences, meeting our students, working with our teachers and our administrators. You know, when you move to central office and you, you move along the way, you need moments like tonight to remember why we are all here and why we do the work that we do. And that students really are at the center of our work. There are challenging times, there are difficult conversations. I did want to say to Lisa, thank you. Those were difficult conversations. And one of the things that you would ask is, where do we go from here? And I think it's continued down that, that road, whether it's a yellow brick road or just a road. And, and to continue the collaboration. In December, when you came to school committee, it was a difficult conversation. And we came together and we didn't get all the work done, but we, we have a good start. And, and that's really the essence of a lot of the work that we do. Not one individual is able to accomplish everything. But it takes someone to inspire the work, and then a team to work together to get, to get it done. And that, you have identified the second step. And that document is a living document, like so many of the documents we create, that can be enhanced and enriched with the things that need to be added. So I thank the committee for supporting the work.
Well done.
So it is possible that I may not be here next, meeting next month. So, because, because of that, and because I have been a chair for either Southborough or Region for most of Ms. Johnson's tenure, I was wondering, what, what is the best way to sort of speak on behalf of the committee, without speaking for the committee, without speaking to each individual member? And then I realized, well, I have access to all of our past evaluations. So I have pulled common themes and consistently repeated words in the evaluations describing you and the job you have done over the past five years as superintendent, that I hope you will ruminate on and remember in your post superintendent days. It started out with, and this is consistent across almost every evaluation, the superintendent is a strong, capable, and collaborative leader. Other words of encouragement were tireless work ethic, attention to detail, an energy level that is hard to comprehend, strong communication skills, warm and enthusiastic attitude, sets high standards for herself and leads by example, does not shy away from difficult conversations, readily accepts feedback, provides educational leadership, empowers her staff, listens to and engages all stakeholders, committed to students and staff, exemplary job in dealing with town administrators, incredible management, communication, and sensitivity skills, effective leader and role model, keeps an open mind, maximizes strengths of her staff, sees challenges as opportunities, consistent positive attitude, demonstrates nuanced and refined knowledge of our district, well versed in legislative issues, fosters and grows successful initiatives, navigated challenging budget considerations, promotes a positive school culture, shows enthusiasm and excitement for new initiatives, listens to the community, is a consummate professional, courteous, timely, diligent, thoughtful, professional, dedicated, strategic, passionate, innovative, encouraging. And the word most used often, as, the word most often used was collaborative, collaborative, collaborative. But the comment that best sums up the common theme of all the evaluations is, "Her commitment to this district is unwavering, her professionalism has never faltered, and her leadership capabilities, all tested by some of the most challenging situations this district has ever seen, have been unparalleled. The district has been incredibly lucky to have Christine at the helm to serve as a role model for future administrators." And I'd like to say, as the chair for many of the years that you have served, it has been our honor and privilege to serve as your school committee. And I hope that what you will remember most are those two standing ovations that you got at town meeting, both in Northborough and Southborough, as the memory of how these towns see you and how your school committee has been so very, very proud to have you as our superintendent.
Well said, Kathleen.
Are you glad I'm not going to be here next month?
Yeah. Kind of like a rule. Again, just, just thank you. One of the biggest joys I've had, you know, I go to Crown Trophy and I was talking to the, the man, the man behind the counter. Cheryl Eppery, his, you know, his assistant introduces me all the time. "Hi, this is the superintendent of school." And I said to the person behind the table, "Yeah, I'm Chris Johnson. Nice to meet you." He said, "I know, you were my teacher." And, you know, for, for like thirty-two years, that continues to be the greatest joy of the work. In some small way, thinking that there has been an impact. The five years as superintendent have brought about some very interesting and unexpected challenges. And so I want to thank the central office team for being there throughout difficult times and, and good times. I could not have asked to have had a chance to work with Greg, an assistant superintendent, who absolutely will be a phenomenal superintendent.
You're making a hard, hard shoes.
I'll give you the slippers in a sec. And, you know, one of the, the things that gives me great comfort in retirement, or thinking about retiring, is to know that where we are and where we will go and grow under Greg's leadership is limitless. And the entire team, everyone sort of dominoing up, I guess, as you would say, is, it's just going to be exciting to watch. We've had, we have outstanding administrators at the school level. That is really where the day-to-day reality of what we do comes to life. And we're just blessed. We have parents who, who send our students to school ready and willing and excited to learn. And that then is just captured by our teachers. And you saw the enthusiasm tonight. I wish I could retire and come back as, you know, as New Hampshire or another country. I could come in as a foreign occupant and, member of, out of state and just attend classes. And it's just so exciting about, you know, what we offer and how we inspire kids to pursue their area of interest and develop areas of interest. And the communities are so supportive of our kids. We live in a blessed bubble. And everyone in it cares about one thing, the school community. Your agenda has always been, and it's made the work easy, what is in the best interest of kids. And not every community has that. So I, I thank you. I thank you for the opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity. Wish everyone well.
We thank you more.
No, no. Anyway, five minutes to nine, and the Sox are probably in the fourth inning or fifth inning. Thank you all very much for everything.
Next is the personnel.
Oh, well, didn't your packet? And these positions have been posted, and we're well on our way of filling the resignations for teachers who may be pursuing other avenues, and we're already interviewing, I think, for some of these, to wish them well, and they continue.
These are all real resignations, not moving to something else?
No, actually, they're real resignations, not the domino up. It's sort of the moving out and about. The first one, actually, this is her second leave of absence. We usually grant someone a wonder leave, and sometimes we extend that leave, so, my familiar teacher to all of us is actually not returning. And then, again, to other positions. Happy to say Dan is still going to be involved with the school as a robotics coach.
Good.
Had a great opportunity to meet with him. I know he's met with Sarah, but I actually met with him at his request, and he's, he's pumped. He's ready to continue working on the robotics team, and I think that's going to be a possibility for him with other things, so that's exciting. Next is communications. We renewed the Myers letter, it's still been good news, and they're still just an amazing organization. I know that we've benefited by our participation, and Greg has also attended many of their meetings. They do great work for regionals, and that was one of them. One warrant, but they're also there for the amendments for pushing for transportation and for breaker reimbursement increases. The Harbinger, thank you, Mr. Kalinda.
Dan's read it to us.
And then the invitation for graduation, if anyone is claiming to return, please RSVP to Cheryl Lepre, so that she can make sure there's a seat for on stage.
And, oh, I have one, I have a stack of every color. It's like the rainbow. And I think, keeping with our one warrant signature, could be quick tonight, or anybody would like. And we also have some things for the nurse leader to sign by, from each of the, I have many chairs, so. Next. And then, that is for that. That is for next month.
Talk about the subcommittee liaison assignments, right? We should probably ask people to button those down. Another would be, and I don't want to put Mike on the spot because he's not here now, but, you know, that was a draft of the guide to athletics. I mean, eventually, there's going to be, either another version or a request for us to approve, I would approve. We should just carry that as an agenda item until he's got it done.
Keep it on the agenda until it's done.
Well, you know, just a little reminder for him, I guess.
Anyone else? Great.
So I move we adjourn tonight's meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee.
Well, that was seconded.
It was seconded before it was finished first.
There. Thank you, well done.